Budget cuts.
Yeah.
Just so you know, that's not annuals.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Hi, Sally.
Sally, sorry to see you. Nice to meet you.
I'm Sergeant Lawrence Marshall again. So she runs through the lines on Arnie and he does the story. Did you find out about him in the frame?
Yes, I did. She was saying.
Okay. I would love for you guys to be.
Well, I'm sure you can add. What did you do now, Mike?
You just took a week off. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, they, you know, they're trying to wrap it up. This is not where I said. And you had time to talk about that. We'd love to know. Okay.
I wore jeans. I don't know if that's a boot.
I wish you. I thought it was a rule. Yeah, and said.
Credit card. There's no. You want to say.
I go off. It's going to go first. Yes. Can you wipe this? No, that's cool. Well, I know it's been a while. I didn't even go back with like.
There's a small. The troops doesn't pay a human. They call them. I said they come down all over me. Could be. So the next day I was coming. Well, I know basically you don't. Or the SUV like. Hey, I think that you. I told you.
Getting a lot of. So I've got. Sure. She may come to join.
This is right. Now, I guess. That is nice. You should work. I mean, it's a good.
Yeah, I'll simply have the. And I'll get the train. Well, we know C C S.
Yeah. You know, it's not. I'm sure. I've been back for kind of a minute. Yeah, it's. We're not just. That gap start.
The second half.
Yeah. Still. Yeah, that's what I like about.
And then.
That's the best one. Jason Harry. He is. Got the. Yeah. Well, yeah, it's not. But I'm like still. I realize.
I'm a lot. He's a little bit.
Good morning. We can give a little try.
We don't want to see on.
No, no.
I got a way with your.
We figured that. Till there's better. So we didn't play. First thing I should probably have to answer. We lost. Okay. Whatever. Uh. That one. And there's.
That's a pretty lot. I hear.
This one. I heard. Yeah. Works. Over. And everyone's. Four bands. Well, probably. It's always. And I do like the world. Not good. Yeah, emergency, yes, indeed. Always a little bit about talent. Like. And I don't care. I'm allergic. Yeah. What's up? Yeah, I'm allergic. Well, that's. That was. That was really bad. We didn't do that. Back. No shit. I'm glad you're not saying. Yeah. This is. The average. Very.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our Florida County Commissioners Court meeting. I now declare the November twelfth, two thousand thirteen Florida County Commissioners Court meeting in order. I'd ask Commissioner Vaughn, could you give us a.
Governor Vaughn, we just give you thanks and praise this morning for the opportunity to Lord to be in your presence. As we assemble this morning to deliberate and do the issues and concerns of citizens of Florida County. And while we ask blessings upon each one that is attendance and all of the employees of Florida County, officials, collective officials of our department head, continually daily to work very diligently to the best interest of citizens of this county. And while we ask blessings upon those that are serving on foreign fields and protection, if they stand in the gap, protection of us a Lord, not only here, this country, but in other theaters, foreign fields. There's families that who work with them, that are with them in support. And we ask blessing to be on those that in the Philippines, the dire states of what they're going through, we ask that you give them strength now entitled me and for all the countries to work together to support. Uh, as now into that this discussion, uh, the open liberation and we will follow to the best interest of this county.
Join me in that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
First item of business this morning is approval of minutes from the October twenty eighth meeting. Ready? Motion to approve. Second?
Second.
And move the second to approve the minutes of the October twenty eighth meeting and discussion. Or corrections? Seeing none, we'll proceed vote on favor or against. Pass four to zero. Before we go on, there are just a couple of things that aren't on the agenda that I think could. Important that we we address in one is we had a couple of firefighters hurt this weekend and I'd like Pat to just tell us a little bit about their status. And they may need personal help.
They were both working traffic at a structure fire Sunday afternoon. By eight o'clock. He left the hospital.
We just want to introduce the way you make your day, which is anything else.
Well, thank you, Pat.
Thank you, sir. We certainly wish for their speedy cut.
And on that note, Pat relayed a word spoken with Richard and also Mr. D Z and certainly giving our close to them what a job they're doing. They basically put their their lives really on the way for those that give love was back to back. So that just goes to show you the first line of response that we have to an excellent job today and we say we appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item is again on the agenda that I would like to invite Pat Dukes to come up. She has a special presentation to give.
Thank you, Commissioner Judge Ware, Kushner Vaughn, Mr. Kelly. This is so exciting. I was here a few weeks ago to tell you that your beautiful courthouse is a finalist in the Texas Downtown Design Awards for Best Historic Restoration. And Mike and I were privileged to be at the Texas Downtown Association Convention in Bastrop, Texas last Thursday night at the awards dinner. And we brought home the trophy, actually not home. You know, I'm so personally proud of this because the courthouse was such a labor of love and we watched through Hyming on the Square as it, as the construction went on and then finally the beautiful dedication. And I think this is a great mark tribute to you because it shows statewide recognition of your efforts on historic preservation. So I was careful to order three trophies, one for Mike, because I think Mike really deserves a big round of applause for this. All the time for historic preservation, one for Center City, of course, because we're equally proud. And then this one is for the Commissioners Court and I hope you'll find a beautiful place to to display it. This is the third award in a row our city has won, one for the Corvair by Marriott, one for the Ted Low key company, and now your first place award. So I brought this home and it's heavy. Mike brought it home in his car so I didn't have to check it on Southwest Delta. It is really heavy. Yes, and then this is a program that shows the awards and you should be so proud of this. And we are proud as partners because of course, one thing I put in the nomination was that this building is so full of life and that you allow us to use it in the summer for things like hiking and really let the whole community enjoy your beautiful building. So thank you for letting us have a part of this and give yourselves a big hand, your first place winners.
Well, we need to thank you too, Pat, for submitting the application and all this. Center City does for the whole community. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
If I may just throw back in this to mention, a special thanks to Judge Ware and Mike for their leadership while in all these number of years that they've been from the ground floor. They were just knowing Judge Ware's leadership along with all the buildings that Mike put in and seeing every instance was just to the right appropriateness to achieve that this project to now three days. So special kudos to Judge Ware and Mike.
Okay, now we'll get on with the rest of our agenda. Next item is our vouchers. We are looking at checks, numbers one, two, one, five, one, nine, five, two, or one, five, two, two, zero, one, and wire numbers two, eight, eight through two, nine, nine, for a total expenditure of two million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and nineteen cents. I have a motion to approve.
No.
Do you move to approve payment of vouchers?
I'll second for this head.
So move the second to yes, to approve vouchers. Commissioner? Do you have some questions?
I just want maybe two on page fifteen. Second item. Check number one, five, two, one, four, one, a hundred thousand dollars. Come to tell me a little bit.
That's what, and y'all approved that back in June for us to expand that money that comes out of the records archive and we're currently in the process of archiving all records to get them into a actual format.
This is also big, oh, I'm sorry. Say it two. Go ahead.
Want to touch base on that?
I was gonna, this is this is the tier is increments as well as a payout for the coroner over here of the tag team that we invested on.
Any other questions on the vouchers?
How kind. How kind of.
Already talked to sharing, have my any answer, our questions answered? Any further discussion on the vouchers? Same time, we'll proceed to vote on favor of paying the vouchers. Raise your hand. All close, same side. Most pass. All right, number three, do you recognize the health insurance account? Ms. Holland, do you have, is she here?
Yes.
Nothing further to add? The report is so recognized. Item four, the treasurer's report, the general treasurer's report at this meeting. That will be at our next meeting on the twenty fifth. Item number five, the budget amendments. You have in front of you some amendments plus there was an amendment that we received this morning.
You'll just notice on item number four, the original office, it had one, two, sixty-two, and that should have been one, two, sixty-six, so I can.
I move that we approve the budget amendments for the current fiscal year as presented, one through four. And move to seconded, is there any further discussion? In favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. Pass four to zero. Item six, vehicle signage to consider an act upon improvement of decals for the constable number two patrol vehicle. Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir. First of all, to see my patrol vehicle back is in awesome shape. I, and I was saying, I feel like I look at it as gone. I feel like, appreciate my vehicle now whenever before, so when it rains, I will be inside. So I mean, I'm noticing them all floating. I'm giving the words, so I, I went all that. I thank y'all. Let me be that one. I appreciate that. Uh, it's starting to be going off real bad before I actually had it asked and I was reacting to the police tonight. There's no names. My name's not on party in place. It's not movies, checks, the party time conference. It's just party time conference, which is what you, and that's it. It's not reflective. It's just, it's just very good enough to put on names. It's not reflected, achieved, reflected, not, so it's just not. Invisible. I thank y'all. We're good to.
Who does, who does that work?
I love this.
That's, that's what you can work right here.
Yes, sir. Exactly. It's gonna be a little bit lighter than that because not gonna be as flashy. It's gonna be a little more.
No, and and really the dollar amount didn't just flash back in the back. It was that we kind of set up as president of the presidents of Uvalo's of order approving the signage on vehicles since that's the amount of photos. That's why I was on the.
I moved to approve the. Any questions? The new did approve that we have, or seconded that we approved the decals for the constable two patrol vehicle. Any further discussion? And then we'll vote all of the favors and signify by raising your hand. Those who are concerned, four, zero. Agenda number seven, elections administration and joint resolution, two thousand fourteen primary. To consider act upon authorizing a joint contract by and among Gentry Powell, Democrat county chair, Tony Dedden, Republican county chair, and Melan Huntley, county elections officer, for the conduct and supervision of the twenty fourteen March primary runoff election.
Thank you very much. You guys have a piece of paper in front of you that shows the joint resolution there and that's really what we're asking for is to instead of holding two separate elections on the same day, the same place, the same time that we're allowed to do the joint resolution. Already been approved by both Tanya and Gentry and can't do it without you guys.
This is, we did this the last primary as well, so it's not. And we want to approve. So move. Move to approve the second. Motion's been made and approved to authorize a joint contract by and among the Democrat county chair, Republican county chair, and our county election officer, conduct of the supervision and supervision at the twenty fourteen March primary. All those in favor? All the same side? Pass four, zero. And we have a thing right here for all of us.
And Jigley has the original and pass. Yeah, he's already said it.
Man, while you're up there, it's past election. Minutes amount of. And resolutions that were on there where, and I I visited a few of those and then. Where, and I visited a few of them, and it seems like there was a following, there was quite a few people in line, waiting, waiting to vote. Were there enough ballot boxes, or ballots?
As far as I votes are concerned, there, we are upping, are increasing the number of voting stations, and some of them are busy voting locations for that reason. What really ran it was not that we had that many people voting, we had more than we would like to have here constitutionally, but the problem was that it's just so much waiting.
Right.
That it was taking votes a lot longer than we had anticipated. And that bottleneck started about six o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the item eight, retirement benefits for County Choice Silver. To consider an act upon renewing the county's participation in the County Choice Silver Program of County Retirees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
County Choice Silver is simply a Medicare supplement that the county has offered for quite some time to county retirees. We have to renew each year, we look at it to renew. This year, the twenty-fourteen renewal comes at no cost increase to our retirees. Also, it is at no cost to the county that the retirees bear the premium cost. Currently, we have two retirees that are on this particular plan, but we offer it to all retiring employees in the county as an option for supplement to retire. And we just need to renew if that's what you choose to do.
Has it, has it premium deferred, has it changed any, or is it?
No.
With also, I mean, with employees themselves?
No, there is no cost increase to the, to the retiree, and of course, no cost to the retiree, or to the county. But we will need the signature on the member contact designations page of Judge Ware, and then also on the twenty-fourteen renewal notice and benefit confirmation. We'll need Judge Ware's initials under the draft bill component that shows the employer that the county pays no premium.
Do you have the original to see?
I don't have the original with me this morning, but a copy will work with the original signatures.
And you just need Judge Ware's to throw back.
Or we need to approve it, so make a motion to approve. Such, and moved and seconded that we approve renewing the county's participation in the County Choice Silver Program for County Retirees. Any further discussion? Same time, we'll vote, all in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, same side. Pass four. Item number nine, payroll schedule change. To hear a report from the committee established to investigate potential solutions for the recently recommended payroll schedule change.
Back on October the fourteenth, this commissioner's court requested that a committee be formed to discuss possible solutions. We did form a committee, and the meeting was held on October the seventeenth. You have a list of those persons in attendance to that meeting on the seventeenth in your packet. At that meeting, the committee discussed all of the various potential scenarios that we talked about in the committee, the commissioner's court that morning, and all of those things were discussed. The committee did voice an opinion that based upon input from a number, from several other employees, that changing the date paid to any other dates besides the fifteenth, and the last day of each month, would be problematic for employees because they had their bills and drafts set up around that schedule, and many employees articulated that it would not be easy for them to change those due dates or those draft dates. And it could present a hard, a significant hardship to employees. We also discussed the number of terminations that the county has incurred and the amount of unrecovered payroll overpayments for the committee to review. The, the number of terminations is reasonably small. The county has a relatively low turnover rate, and the unrecovered payroll overpayments represent less than a thousand dollars in the last two years that has actually been lost. So it was a small amount of money. However, it still presents the, the problem of paying in advance to time actually being worn. The committee unanimously decided that they would like to, to get a legal opinion off first from our county attorney, and that if necessary, we could request a legal opinion through the Attorney General if that was deemed appropriate, to find out for sure regarding legal guidance specific to Article Three, Section fifty-two and fifty-three of the Texas Constitution, because that is a concern. So we did, I provided a written request for legal opinion. I submitted it to Scott Brunland on October the twenty-first. I provided you a copy of that request in your packet, and we are still awaiting an official legal opinion from Mr. Brunland. And once we get that legal opinion, then the committee will reconvene, and we'll discuss all of those options in light of the legal opinion that we get at that point.
Scott, can we anticipate the, or the window of, of, as far as that opinion, or is something that?
The research is done, the research is done. Formulating it into something that is able to be understood, particularly given the federal law component of the question, is, is proven a little bit more difficult, but I'm anticipating the next week or so. Now, as, I, I will let you know, now that it's having open opinion is being requested at present time, she's requested that the matter be considered attorney-client confidential. She will, of course, have the, the option to share that opinion with whoever she needs, but I will not until she tells me.
Okay, during the meeting, were there any reasonable requests made that maybe could make this transfer possible? Even, prior to making any legal stuff available?
Again, the, the committee discussed the possibility of waiting until such time that a COLA is approved by this commissioner's court, and then at that time designate funds from the COLA to be a one-time cost of living adjustment to offset any short payroll periods that it would take to adjust the pay period. That was one option. The other options really encompassed more changing the payroll end dates as opposed to the date paid. And it, it's possible to change those payroll end dates, although, as we've discussed in previous meetings, it will still, ultimately, whatever pay period, any kind of changes made will be essentially a short pay period. That's, that's ultimately the bottom line. But rather than move forward and try to hash out decisions or options, the committee wanted to know first and foremost how we stand in relationship to the Texas Constitution.
Appreciate it, thank you. Look forward to the, another report.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number nine? We'll move into agenda item number ten, which is abnormal tax rule fiscal year twenty thirteen, to consider an act upon approving the twenty thirteen tax rule. Do you have a motion to approve the abnormal tax rate for twenty thirteen?
Same here.
Tax rule, keep it ready. We have a motion, and a second, to approve the abnormal tax rule for this year twenty thirteen.
Do you make a motion, I'm sorry.
Direction. Thank you. Do you have any further discussion? What are some of the exemptions that people get, just like over sixty-five, that sort of thing?
Again, over sixty-five, they get disability exemption, insurance exemptions.
Do you have a, 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 that you have to send about, those individuals are eligible for those exemptions, take it back, you know, it means to be retired, be over sixty-five, benefits, benefits?
I did, we need to vote on this motion, all those in favor? Take a flag to raise your hand. Those opposed, same side?
Thank you.
Four to zero. All right, we'll move to item number eleven, which is affecting the agri-life extension service. To consider an act upon the appointment of Potter County Extension Agent for Agriculture and Natural Resources position. Mr. Brandon Duke is here, who is the district extension administrator.
Thank you for allowing us to be here today. It's my pleasure to be here to present to you Mr. Nathan Cower. Just to tell you a little bit about the process, I came in here with you before we began the process. We had several individuals that we talked to, we wanted to find the right fit. My role as district extension administrator is to interview applicants and review applicants and to find the person that we would like to recommend to you. We involved Commissioner Church and Commissioner Medea, as well as Judge Ware in the process. As to meet with Nathan prior to today and raise to ask him some questions, to me, we found the person that's perfect fit for this position, Nathan Brandon. Well, his experience to the position has been in both urban and rural counties, and has, has a great relationship building skills, and, and has proven over time that he can develop the kind of extension programs that impact the, the people of Texas. So we're excited about this possibility. Your role today, obviously, you have the final say, the final approval in this, and so in a moment, we'll ask you to, to approve this recommendation. Nathan has a master's degree from Southwest Missouri State University in Springfield, Missouri, and a master's degree from Texas Tech University. He, as I said, has been straight an excellent experience with adult and youth programming, has experience in multiple counties, then was rated outstanding work ethic and appropriate. Track record as a team player. So I'll pause before we go any further and ask if you have any questions for Nathan or?
Not a question, I just want to speak in, in support of Nathan's appointment. I've known Nathan a long time, I don't know how many years we've known each other, but.
It's a disqualified.
One of the worst things you can ever say about a person is it can't get along with somebody. And Nathan has a tremendous people skills, he works well with everybody. I think we're really lucky, and Brandon knows how, I put a little pressure, I try to get Nathan here. So anyway, I, I think we're very lucky to have someone like Nathan. He'll do a great job for us. Go home.
That's it, Nathan, any comments? No, I just appreciate being considered for this opportunity and look forward to working with y'all, with the people here in the public arena. I will do. I then would recommend that the court approve Nathan Cower for the position of Potter County Extension Agent for Agriculture and Natural Resources. His annual county portion of his salary will be twenty-six thousand and sixteen dollars per year. His start pay will be December.
Judge Ware made motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed, same side? Pass four, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. I don't know if this place is staying bad. Congratulations, and we'd invite you to live in Potter County.
Yes, sir.
Live amongst people where you'd be working.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is item twelve, Santa Fe Railroad Museum. To hear a report on the status of the railroad museum and to take any action necessary.
Before you, before I talked to Walter Warford, who was an event project, the Santa Fe Museum Corporation, the nonprofit corporation, and all the documents are there, he asked me to extend his request. When I talked to him last week, he had already had a court board mediation scheduled for this morning that he could not get out of. And so in lieu of that, instead of you still trying to make it, in lieu of that, he prepared that document for us, which I've just received this morning. So it has a, a good chunk of it, the bag is kind of the foundation documents, and other which we have with him, the Artwork Corporation of the Santa Fe Museum. So that's, that's all kind of historical background for you. There, the meat of it, I think, is the, is his report, is to describe about kind of what the museum has been up to, where they hope to go, and I think there's material back there as well. You don't have much financial information, I know that, there is some in another. By, he gave, he gave us, just one copy of Board Members for Railroads Guide Line. There's some prior tax stuff, I've got, we know how much we've paid out. And I talked to Walter a little bit about the amount, and I said, you may have noticed we didn't incorporate any money from museums this year because we wanted to ask some questions about that. And he agreed that was the right thing to do, right? So, I mean, basically, things are kind of only have, I think I could speak with that, and speak with, and saying that, right? And there's some, as you'll read documents, you'll see that there's some hold, some, some rain, and you look at the, the, the Santa Fe, I mean, the city's purchase, there's some interest, even though the city owns it, I think in the status, you can see them there. So that's kind of the hope that he's expressed.
Sarah, do you need to have her come back next? Do you need, or behind some kind of?
I think, I think if you're interested in the financial part of it, but what's balance and, you know, what's going with those kinds of things. Oh, Mercy was very interested in that.
Yeah, so we've got, we know we've been paying out a hundred and fifty dollars a year, several years. I know there have been some expenditures just for, they had a contract for a time with the annual museum, but it's kind of consulting thing. There's some minor expense, I think, for setting up the nonprofit corporation, legal fees and things like that. So, yeah, I, we have some information, but not, not one, so.
Let's have, let's invite her back.
All right.
And especially for that forum.
Okay.
Okay, number thirteen is to, is a Potter Randall appraisal district to consider an act upon voting for members of the appraisal district board of directors. I guess it was a month ago, we, we offered a name as a possible nominee. We have a forum here today asking us to, to vote for five positions. We have a total of four hundred and fourteen hundred and fifty-five votes, so I would want to divide up these votes, I don't know how you go about doing this. Should we leave it up to you, Jeff? Any suggestions from the court?
No, a couple, a couple of people on this list that I would certainly would have involved, I recommend. Lenny Sadler and Gilbert Guzman. Who is the? Lenny Sadler and Gilbert Guzman. Both businessmen here in town. And Cindy Spann. And I go, this is something we just need to make a selection.
We have five, we have five of the seven. Or we could put all our votes on one if I was to, if I could, but I'm. It's according to like five positions.
And those, the men, Kathy, most need to happen today?
I assume so. Or it's actually says, back by December fifteenth. See, we have some time. We get both the five positions and just for your information, that's two hundred and ninety-one votes for each position, we split it up equally five ways.
I'd rather hold this back until the next, next meeting.
Should we try and find out something about each one of these people? What they do and maybe a little bit about where they are? This was kind of, it's kind of hard just seeing Nathan to know what they do. I would recommend to new agents that, folks that I know.
Do you want to let me know who goes, what they, what they work for and I'll probably find out a little bit about some of these agents? I need to get to which? Overdones and vote publication. Vote publications for Guzman. Vote POP.
I think this is all, I don't know if we got anything else other than this, but I, they didn't call me, ask me for information about Riz Trousch, so they, so they were, they need appraisal, appraisal district. So I think they were putting together some kind of little biography of each person so you might check with the childrens and see. Or maybe we didn't get that document here, but there's, I assume there's six documents floating around.
Never, Paul, you called me and asked me about this.
Yeah.
So I was just. I'll try to do some checks, but that's. We'll put that on our table line until our next meeting, November twenty-fifth.
All right, number fourteen, Tri-State Fairgrounds interlocal agreement with the city of Amarillo waterline easement. To consider an act upon approving an interlocal agreement with the city for a water main on the Tri-State Fairgrounds as threat and to grant an easement to the city for the water.
I could probably need a better background before I spend this time than I have, but, but essentially we've got, we've got a building that's over the city's water line, there you go, and we need to, we need to reroute that water line so it's not cut out of that building that's constructed there. And so in order to do that, we've got to give the city an easement. I mean, we'll reach the ring with the city, type the part of cost, and then we will, we also will give them easements, so that'll give legal ownership of the ground.
The, all the blue lines that you're going to see right here, these are the lines that the city's water mains. The area right here for where my pen is pointing to, there's currently a roping arena that's been built off the top of one of the mains out there. And this arena was built probably between last July, August, into the first part of September. They were needing an irrigation pad out there and it was brought to the city's attention that this was actually built in office. One of the concerns that I have out there just from years of being involved with the city on that property out there, they have never, ever been the utilities on that property. Back when I came to work here, we worked with the city on any stoppages or water mains or anything that needed to be repaired. Those belong to the city of Amarillo water mains. What they're asking, like Dave explained, is they're asking for an easement to come on to our property, basically to, kind of thinking about rerouting this right here back around, but whatever happens, they want an easement on this property out there. You've never had one before. The other blue lines that you see coming in around the stadium, this right here is your county extension building, the O'Rea's. You're coming on down toward their event center and then their stadium, but all these blue lines are the mains, so you'd be looking at one, two. Did you pull that? I'm sorry. But all the blue lines that you can see right here, off Martin Street, back around the tenth, all of these right here are city mains that are, but they're just asking at this point right now, make days of my understanding, that they would like to come to the court to ask reasons on all the others. If you grant an easement, they go through, they start replacing water lines out there, these water lines are very old, just they start putting in new water lines, you start taking the water pressure, you're going to change, they're going to create a lot of issues out there.
Who is this?
Hartman.
Who is this?
Who's asking this?
The city of Amarillo, Mr. Ford Hartman, we had this with him and he's the one that has presented this request due to the request from Burton, who was good and made it right there for a change.
So they're looking for this as initial easement, then open the door for the others.
The remainder of. This has always been very baked around through the years, all the sewer lines, all the water lines out there, they have always owned them, why they set up like that after several decades. But they have maintained them throughout the years.
So if we wouldn't, didn't allow the easement, what is their next objective? What could they?
I, I would, if I were the city, I'd be uneasy about the water line, about that property. But the, the thing that would, I guess, I mean, the thing, I think the inconvenience to us is, is it means that we can't interfere with easement, which means there might be like this situation.